Apologies for the technology challenges, but I think we're good now. So the meeting will come to order this time is now five thirty-four on Monday, January twenty-third. Oh, how do you have my gavel like started? This is a regular monthly meeting of the District of Columbia Commission on the Arts and Humanity. My name is Reggie Van Lee, Chairperson of the Commission. I am an African-American man wearing a black sweatshirt. I'll now call the role. When you hear your name, please answer present. Stacy. Cora. Maggie.
Present.
Quanise. Natalie. Oh, Quanise is good. Natalie.
Present.
Kimber. Mariah.
Present.
Carla. Carla. I thought I saw her there.
Present, present, I'm sorry.
Hector.
Present.
Gretchen.
Present.
Good, and myself. So Stacy, Cora, and Kimber, have you all arrived? Good, so Coram is present. This is a meeting of a public body held in open session in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. Notice of the meeting was posted on the Commission's website, dcrts.dc.gov, on the D.C. Office of Open Governance Central Meeting Calendar, and in the District of Columbia Register. The meeting is being conducted remotely using the Cisco Webex Virtual Meeting Platform and is being livestreamed to the Commission's YouTube channel. An electronic recording of the meeting will be available for viewing online following the conclusion of the meeting. I will now read the land acknowledgement. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will, some were drawn to leave their distant homes in hope of a better life, and some have lived on this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. We begin this effort to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We stand on the ancestral lands of the Kotschank and the Skataway people. We pay respects to their elders past and present. Please take a moment to consider the many legacies of violence, displacement, migration, and settlement that bring us together here today. And please join us in uncovering those truths at any and all public events and to use such truths to guide the legacy of this arts commission. The agenda for this meeting was previously circulated. Is there any objection to the agenda? Hearing no objection, the agenda stands as adopted. Um, I will forego any announcements from me other than a welcome to everyone and thank you and welcome to the beginning of the calendar year, our first meeting of the calendar year. We have a full agenda, so I'll let us go right into the agenda. Uh, we have two presentations tonight. The first is from the Friends of Fort Dupont Ice Arena, an awardee of our East Arts Grant. The Friends of Fort Dupont Ice Arena was formed in the summer of nineteen ninety-six in response to the pending closure of Ice Arena for their former owner, the National Park Service. Parents and friends organized and took over the management of the arena, revitalized the facility that is in the heart of Ward Seven in Southeast DC. The Fort Dupont Ice Arena is the only public indoor ice arena located in Washington, DC. I'll let them present.
Thank you very much. Can everybody hear and see me?
Yes, we can.
Alrighty, well, it's a pleasure to be here. I am so happy to be here, uh, on behalf of our kids on ice. And Patrick was going to start us off with a video, and then I was gonna follow up after that. Can you take it away, Patrick?
Hi, my name is Sharon, and I've been working for Fort Dupont for twenty-five years. I am here to support the Fort Dupont Kids on Ice and been enjoying every bit of it. Wouldn't miss it for a bit. Thanks so much for all the support that I have.
Hi, my name is Nagella. I'm a coach here. I help the kids with their jumps and spins, and I love it here because they love to be here and they really wanna learn. I am so excited and I love the arts.
Hi, I'm Lisa Carlton. My daughter Leila is on the ice right now. She started here and learned to skate, and with the skills that she's learned, she's now in advanced figure skating class, and she has been skating with the Virginia Ice Theater, Theater on Ice Team for four years now. We love this community. We love Fort Dupont.
One, two, three, four, five, six, three, step forward, make a circle. One, two, three, four, five, six. Step forward, three, and three. One, two, three, four, five, six.
My name is Kyra. I'm a synchronized skater, and I love dancing and performing on ice. Special thanks to Khalid Randolph, David Markie, Commissioners, and DCAAH.
Thank you. Uh, everybody, can you still hear me?
Yes.
Alright, well, why don't we continue on? Uh, thanks so much for the chance to share my video. I just wanted to mention about the video, uh, you, ice dancing is a separate discipline uh, from synchronized skating, which you saw there. So we apply the ice dancing technique here through chassees or stroking. Um, and another note about what you were just seeing there is, um, in synchronized skating, there are specifically two program component scores that are focused specifically on the artistic side. And I'll just really quick tell you about them. The first one is composition, which includes program choreography in skating, which reflects the theming, timing, tempo to music. Uh, and the presentation is the second one, and that includes expression, posture, uh, body position, and synchronization. That is, uh, one of the wonderful things we get to enjoy here at the Fort Dupont Ice Arena. In fact, a lot of those girls are in our new, uh, Learn to Syncro, uh, program. Uh, and, and some there are also in our figure skating program. Such a, a, such great kids. So the Fort Dupont Ice Arena, as Reggie mentioned, we're right here in Ward Seven, Southeast DC, in the heart of Ward Seven, in the heart of a food desert. Um, and frankly, well, one thing we try to do here for these kids east of the river, and most of our kids are from east of the river. They're from about thirty different schools that are right neighboring all around us. That, those kids you saw in the video, they're our neighborhood kids for the most part. Yes, we work with kids from all eight wards, but the majority are from east of the river. We really try to give them increased opportunity, advancement, and inspiration. Okay, and, and these are things not to be taken for granted necessarily here. Um, but they have a safe place to be, a safe place to learn. And this is a place, and we are so grateful to all of you Commissioners. We're so grateful to Khalid Randolph. We're so grateful to David Markie and all of you who, who, who have just made so much possible here over the time. This place here, Fort Dupont Ice Arena, is a place where, yes, what you saw is kind of a sport, but it's also an art, and it's where sport and art comes together here east of the river in the form of programming for at-risk youth. Uh, we track these kids. We track these kids when they go to college, that once, we have a very high retention rate. When they come to us, they often stay with us for years and years and years. And then when they graduate a program, we have a record of many going on to do great things in synchronized skating and figure skating and all kinds of arts-related things. And, and to colleges, they come back to volunteer. Anyway, uh, not to, not to be too long here, but I really would like just to make a couple more points here. We, what we take pride in and what DCAAH has really helped us with in terms of leveling the playing field here east of the river is removing cost barriers associated with ice time, training, tierals, props. Um, for our Theater on Ice program, our holiday shows, new costuming, all of these things which are, which are difficult to come by here, you have breathed life into this program. And you have, the demand, uh, here is more and more kids are finding out about it, and they wanna take part, whether it be participating in the themed holiday show, whether it be doing figure skating or synchronized skating or competing in some way. We're able to accommodate more and more kids, uh, which is something we're very excited about. And the kids also, they get to, they build their self-esteem, which is frankly more important than the arts, right? They're building their self-esteem. They're, they're achieving goals. They're getting positive feedback. They're seeking stability and, and, and even me. I, I'm, I work here in the fundraising and administrative sides, but I might be some, I might be one of the few stable things they might happen to see in their life as they're walking, you know, through the hallway. Um, we love what we do. Our coaches are committed, extraordinarily committed, and these are, as Nagella in the video said, great, great kids. Um, so our students and these kids, they're interested. They are genuinely interested in performance, musical interpretation, characterization through costumes, movement, choreography. You know, they learn to exhibit artistic expression through choreography to music, combining athleticism, grace, and poise. The ice here is essentially like a blank, blank canvas, as an artist would, would sit down to a blank canvas. And it's just waiting, this ice is waiting to be adorned with turns and footwork and spins punctuated by musical beats and rhythm. This is what we love, and this is why we love our partnership with, with the arts. It's, it's, it's very critical. As you know, um, we struggle, we, we work hard, and, and somehow everything works out, and it has for the past ten years, which I've been here.
Good, good.
Yeah, and, and we wanna thank you for, for making all of this possible. The final thing, Reggie, I would like to say to you all, as I'm probably up on seven minutes, and especially to the Commissioners. There are some proposed changes to the East of the River Grant. It's turning into the East Arts Grant. And a couple of the changes could potentially disqualify us from applying, which would really hurt us. And I'll tell you what the big change, what, what the big change is. The, the, one of the guidelines in there says for budgets, five hundred thousand dollars and below. Well, our fundraising income is, is roughly, we try to get it to be five hundred thousand dollars a year. But where we go, where we exceed that and go over that is in the evenings. We sell ice to schools like Gonzaga, St. Albans, um, places, places that play hockey games, and they help us. They, that's called earned income. And that earned income helps us to pay for the electricity. This is a very old building. You can just imagine the building built in nineteen seventy-six, how much it costs, and what we try to do in order to keep this place cold, to keep the ice frozen, to keep the Zamboni, the Olympia, which has lit, outlived three lifetimes, working. This is why our budget is over what you're asking. Um, and this is why we, it's, this is, this is, Commissioners, this is a very unique thing to have an ice rink in the, in an inner-city neighborhood. It doesn't exist anywhere else. If it does, maybe, maybe one place. I don't even know where it is. But, uh, please, I, we beg you to, to take into consideration grandfathering us in so that we may continue to participate, so that these kids can continue to thrive the way they, which they thrive. And again, thank you, David Markie. We love you. Kids love you. Khalid, who better to work with? And, and Commissioners, everybody who's made this possible. And little side note, I'm gonna get better on my end on the portal. Sometimes my, my, my documents get kicked back once in a while, but I'm working on that. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, and thank you again.
Great, thank you, thank you. We always like to hear from our grantees, and I'm so delighted to see the great success you, you're making there. I am going to clearly ask Gretchen, who chairs our grant committee, and David and Terrell and Khalid to think through, how might we be able to continue to be helpful to you um, with the rules we put in place? There's a reason that we have these policies in place, but also we're reasonable people, so we wanna do what's right. So your, your, your speech will not go unheard, uh, and we will try to be helpful to you.
Thank you very much. It was a pleasure to be here and meant the world to me on behalf of our kids. You made my day. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, our second presentation is from local economic development consultant, John Stover and Associates. In early twenty-twenty-two, uh, we contracted with them to analyze the impact of COVID-nineteen on the arts and cultural sector, specifically here in Washington, DC, and to develop recommendations for how we could best facilitate the sector's recovery. Having completed their final report, tonight they'll be shared with us some key aspects of their research and findings. Now, please hold any questions until the end of the presentation, but I will say that I've had a chance to look at the report that they did, and I'm happy to see there's a lot of overlap between what they're recommending and what we're already putting in place. We certainly want to hear any new ideas or additional things we need to do to better serve our constituents. So, um, our friends from John Stover.
Hi, everyone. Ted, uh, go ahead. Well, I'm also very pleased to be, uh, speaking with you all. Um, as, uh, many of you know, um, our firm, JSNA, we're, we're a DC-based economic development consulting firm. We specialize in, in, um, economic analysis and economic development strategy and do a lot of work pertaining, uh, to arts and culture, both in, in, in DC and throughout the country. Um, we completed this work, um, in the fall of last year, and, uh, we partnered with, um, a firm called Lord Cultural Resources, who led the, um, engagement, um, aspects of, of, of the work. Um, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna see if I can keep myself to about ten to fifteen minutes, try to keep it to ten minutes, and then kind of focus more on, on the conversation with, with, with you all and answer any questions. Um, and our, um, perfect, thanks so much, Patrick. Um, the, the purpose here, and we can leave it at this cover page for just a moment, um, is, I, I think first and foremost is really just tell the story of what happened during the pandemic. You know, what, what do we all need to know? How do we equip ourselves with, with the right talking points that, that is true to our stakeholders? Um, and that, that's actionable, and we know, you know, we're, we're sailing through and still in, frankly, some of the weirdest economic times in, in generations, and, um, uh, the, the arts and cultural sector, we're, we're hit, um, in many ways, you know, um, uh, harder, certainly harder than most, and in some ways, the, you know, disrupted, uh, the most overall. And, uh, kind of the, the second goal from this, uh, you know, as, as Reggie explained, was, um, you know, how can we connect the dots, uh, to, to implications and get everybody on board for the, for the so what? You know, how, what, how do we advocate, um, in current times, um, for the arts community and, and continue to provide support in, in the ways that are currently, um, needed? And, um, so, you know, our, our output, which I'm gonna, I encourage you all to read, and, and I certainly won't do justice on, on a quick recap now, um, is really intended for, for, for you all, for CAH as the audience, um, to help, um, uh, provide recommendations and, and, uh, coincide with, with all the great work that you're doing, but also intended for, for the city at large and other, um, district agencies, um, for the philanthropic community at large, uh, for the, um, kind of broader stakeholder and residential community, and of course, the arts community itself. And this is truly one of our favorite projects that we worked on this last year. Uh, loved working with Jeff, also Gretchen. It was great to see your face, um, on, on screen, uh, for, for a moment there. Uh, I haven't, I haven't seen you in a little while. Um, great, great to see you. Um, and, uh, uh, the, a couple, maybe just super quick definitions. You know, we're really focused on, um, industry sectors and, and employment, uh, particularly, uh, and we kind of, the overarching term we're, we're using for, for arts, culture, humanities, as, as we're calling it, the arts and cultural sector. Um, and we really focused on kind of six sub, um, industry classifications, um, independent artists, um, arts-related businesses such as tattoo artists or guitar stores, and then, and then, um, a number of different types of arts organizations. And if we jump to the, to the next page, the table of contents, um, we, we conducted, um, just about four hundred stakeholder surveys, had focus groups, revert, um, reviewed all the, um, reporting data and information from, from CAH and, and other agencies, um, used, um, a lot of economic, um, and, and business data, um, and used a economic modeling program called Implan. Um, and, uh, you know, again, the, the overall structure was really about, okay, what, what's the story here, um, at, at the beginning, um, and then through the pandemic, um, and, and then now for, um, the arts, um, industry, for the arts sector? Um, what, what has this meant, um, for the, for the city at large? What has this meant economically? What has this meant fiscally? And what has this meant, um, socially and, and, and kind of with, with folks' connection to, to, to the arts and, and the world around them? Um, if we jump to the next page.
Hey, could I interrupt just for a minute, Mr. Stover?
Yes.
Cause there's a question as to, uh, how people get a copy of the document. So let us, because otherwise people are, first they're trying to take notes, but if they can get a copy of the document.
Oh, thank you so much. Yeah, please, I'd say, like, everything I'm saying is, is absolutely in, in, in the report, um, and it's meant to be really kind of digestible and, and, um, so, um, yeah, so, and I believe CAH has it. It, it should be, um, good to go as, as a public, um, uh, document, um, especially if you see fit, um, after our discussion, uh, tonight. So I would strongly encourage, um, uh, the Commission to, to, to post it to the website, link it to the website, um, frankly, as, as soon as possible, especially because the, a lot of the information and the data is, is pretty fresh. Um, so hopefully that's something that, um, uh, folks can access, you know, easily. And I certainly think, you know, reaching out to, to Patrick or, or Jeffrey or anybody, um, at CAH too, that they should be able to provide, uh, the report as well.
Great, thank you.
Um, so again, I, I don't expect, the, 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 the report is, uh, very design-oriented and, and, and visual, um, but I'm, I'm gonna kind of linger on some stuff that I don't expect you to be able to see, um, the writing on, 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 on the page. But, but again, very much encourage you all to, to take a deeper look. Um, and, uh, so when, when talking, you know, we, we set the stage, of course, about the importance of, of arts and culture historically in DC, from the Smithsonian's, uh, Kennedy Center, you know, murals across, um, our, our, our buildings, you know, the role in jazz and punk and, and Go-Go and, and, um, all of that. And, um, then really kind of dove into those, um, six industry sectors, um, for, you know, the, uh, total employment of independent artists, of arts-related businesses, and then those four sectors of, of arts-related venues, arts production, um, arts-related education, fundraising, advocacy, and, uh, the, the humanities. And, um, in total, um, the, these different, uh, industries account for three billion dollars in revenue, um, over sixteen thousand employees. Um, and then when you account for, okay, well, what's the kind of broader economic impact? Cause, you know, artists, when, when they're spending their, their wages or supply chain with arts organizations, well, now we're talking four point two billion dollars and supporting twenty-two thousand, um, local jobs. And, um, that was kind of at the baseline of, of twenty nineteen. Um, we have not recovered, as, as I think, um, folks will not be surprised, um, to learn. Um, so, uh, sixty-four percent of, of arts organizations reported that they were significantly impacted and not able to achieve their full mission, um, over the course of, um, at least at some point during the, the pandemic. Um, over the first year, uh, these sectors saw a decline of one point one billion dollars in revenue. That's a twenty-six percent drop. Um, that is one of the, the hardest, that, that was worse than hotels, food and beverage, those other industries that were really decimated by the pandemic. Um, uh, and I think a really telling and important number is arts and culture used to represent two point one percent of DC's overall economy. Um, and that dropped, um, at, at its lowest point over, over the course of, of, uh, twenty twenty to one point six percent, um, of, of, of the district's, um, overall economic base. And we know that, you know, at first it was kind of just lost of, of, of revenue and, and the confusion. Um, you know, over the course of, of, of the years, a lot of other challenges, um, emerged, um, from, from labor issues, um, you know, inflation, rising costs, uh, you know, emotional fatigue, um, was, was a really big thing. And then a lot of people, you know, left the field entirely. Um, and then when folk, when organizations were looking to hire, um, you know, there, there was, it was incredible challenges and the costs there and, and, and the, the implications were, were, were massive. Um, the, something that is just a, a universal story, um, is, is really kind of the mix of earned versus contributed money, where, you know, coming into the pandemic, um, on average, I thought this is really interesting, um, arts organizations in DC had on average, um, approximately about, you know, fifty-fifty of, 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 of their revenue, um, was earned versus contributed. Um, and the rise of contributed revenue is, is really the hero story of, 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 of the pandemic, where, um, then over twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, two-thirds of, of, um, funds coming to arts organizations, um, was, was contributed. And the most common type of financial assistance was from CAH. And I think that it was, that's more than PPP, um, and, um, just incredibly impressive. Sixty-six percent of arts organizations, forty-three percent of, of artists, um, surveyed, um, received relief funds, um, from DC government, including CAH. Um, and, um, you know, I have to say, I was really impressed by the, the, um, positive feedback, just the, the image currently of, of, of the arts community in, in terms of being, um, grateful and acknowledging, um, you know, the, the, what, what they've received from CAH and, and the changes that CAH made, um, in, in, in their, their, their funding, um, to make it accessible to folks over the course of the pandemic. You know, we also know that the pandemic significantly changed the way that art is created, the way the audiences, um, engage in the art, and that has some really important and long-lasting, um, implications or ramifications as well. Um, more and more art is, is, is being digested virtually. More and more programming from arts organizations is, is, is happening virtually. More and more employment is happening, um, virtually, and, and you really can't, there's, there's a limit to the extent that you can shy away from it, um, and, and be able to retain jobs and be able to retain audiences. And there's a great quote from, I think it was a, a theater operator, and I'm gonna get it wrong, but it was something to the effect of, um, you know, attendees want digital and arts organizations want in person. Um, and, and there's really that kind of disconnect there, and, you know, the audience base has not picked back up. And, and that's a really important and, and a little bit, um, disconcerting, um, aspect, both in terms of willingness to pay, they're so used to free content, they're so used to being able to sit in their chair and engage whatever kind of art form they want. Um, and, and that's been a real challenge to arts organizations. But there's been some really interesting positive disruptions as well. Um, you know, the kind of barriers to entry, that kind of, you know, the channels for financing and showcasing the arts. You know, we heard from some theater companies about, you know, it's kind of easier to make a movie and get it seen by audiences than, than ever before. Um, and so that, that's really kind of an interesting, um, change of, of, of the status quo as well. In addition, the arts community is, is remarkably, why don't I say, Patrick, if you could jump to the next, uh, page? Sorry about that. Um, uh, and that, that chart on the top left is, is showing the change in, in earned and contributed. Um, whereas, you know, at first it's kind of fifty-fifty, and just that, that drop down of, of, um, how much reduction there was in, in, um, earned revenue and how much increase there was in, in, in contributed. Um, and, and again, though, we have all, we're gonna show you a bunch of like fun little images, and, and I really encourage you to, to dive in, um, more fully. Um, but the arts community is, is somewhat remarkably optimistic. Um, a large majority of folks, um, see themselves continuing to, to increase revenue and impact, um, and, and grow in just about every, every way, um, this year and, and next year. Um, and that's a really positive sign, especially since a number of, of sectors are not that optimistic heading into twenty twenty-three, frankly. Um, and so when thinking about, what, what are the big picture implications here? Uh, we really think that there's three indicators or elements that are going to most strongly impact the arts over the upcoming, um, next few years in, in the District of, of Columbia. Um, one is the, the state of the economy, you know? Um, is inflation gonna continue? Is labor shortage and availability gonna continue? Um, is, is, uh, tour, are tourism levels gonna come back fully? Those, those types of, of elements that are largely out of control of arts organizations are, are really, really huge and, and a big unknown. Um, the second is the level of, of partnership support, both, both public and private, um, given. Uh, this is a huge one. A lot of organizations are seeing that, um, you know, the, the ticket sales haven't come back, the audience levels haven't come back to, to the same, um, extent, and there were. And they're worried that the contributed revenue is going to start declining at, at a large clip and not commensurate with audience demand coming back. In addition, there was a large increase in support for artists of color and arts organizations of color. There, there was concern that, you know, is that going to continue? Is, is that kind of a blip or can we make sure that that is sustainable as well? And then the, the third factor is audience demand itself, you know? How can we help folks understand that they have to pay for, for, for art? And, and, you know, kind of changes this paradigm shift a little bit. And it's a really interesting and, and thought provoking and complicated question. And then we, I think I might stop here or have Patrick kind of thumb through, I'm just kind of show you the, the report and maybe Patrick, just keep going through, you know, like one or two seconds per slide, I'm kind of give you the framework again, very visual, you know, you can definitely go through and on your own pace. Don't read it straight on through. Going, you know, kind of the share of different arts industries, implications, how that spreads out over the city, how CH grant changes over different parts of the city, what's the ecosystem? Who are the partners and players that make the industry possible? And keep going. A lot of detail on, on the economic impact, what happened amongst sectors over 2019, 2020, 2021? How does that compare to other type of sectors in, in the economy? How did sales dip and then come back? How does that relate to, to policy changes and mandates and opening up venues? What, what's the employment loss and revenue loss like for, for, for different arts-related industries? How does that differ among different organizations? More detail on, on earned versus contributed revenue, where is it coming from? How does that differ among different sub-industries and arts and culture? How does it compare to other cities? More detail on who receives CH grants and, and who receives other types of funding? To what extent, what did that mean for their organization? One, one thing I might say on that front is a really big takeaway was, was left restrictions on, on, on grant funding too. That, that was something that was almost universally said, that, that there was more kind of unrestricted funding was just key. I can't tell you how many folks said that their, their organization would have died, that the unsexy stuff of what an arts organization does, just payroll and paying the bills and, and things like that. And having the flexibility of who knows what the next month holds, you know, writing a grant and then being beholden to that when, when the world changes is, is, can be really difficult. And so the fact that CH pivoted really, really sustained a lot of organizations. We talked a lot about kind of what, what are projections for the years coming up. Going, here are some different scenarios, what would it, what combination of, of economic conditions, venues and stakeholder demand changes is, is going to help things kind of get back to the status quo?
So Mr. Stover, I would ask, in light of this environment and this, these realities, what are the three most important things you think this commission needs to do? Not just be aware of, but actually take action on it.
I love it. So let's jump maybe two pages over. I, I think, or maybe a page, spread 29, Patrick, page 56 and 57. So the, the big implications here were unrestricted funding, I would say, is, is a really big one. Keep the funding coming, secure as much resources as you can. The need is, is paramount. The arts industry is not recovered in, in full. We're still at about 89% capacity in certain ways, but it's really not as rosy as that because of inflation, increased costs.
So I'll say here, our, our shift to significant general operating funding is exactly what they need. Unrestricted, use it as you need it, because there are also the needs that other funders won't pay for, and our general operating allows you to cover those expenses.
That's, that's exactly it. And, and that was a general trend across the country. But I think you guys are really leaders in that and, and that's, that's something that should be sustained, including assistance for, for underrepresented artists and arts organizations as well. I think transparency and communication is, is another big aspect. I think one of them is a lot of folks don't understand everything that you've done. And I think that there's an opportunity to kind of help you guys be more of, more recognized for, for, for this work. And so there's a couple of ways that, that, that could happen. We, we would love to see you publish an annual state of the arts report. This is actually something that a couple, I wish I could take credit for this, a number of stakeholders said this as well. Let people know, A, it can be educational, help folks understand what, what are the conditions, what, what do they need to know? Linked to, to resources. And there are, it is such a crazy hodgepodge of resources for any business, but especially for nonprofits and especially for arts and culture. How can we, and frankly, the CH and your website is a fantastic repository of that already. I don't want to take away from that because again, you're, you're much better than, than, than the norm. But, you know, NEA, federal resources, all, you know, DSLBD, DMPED, there, there's so many different financial resources happening. How can we be, continue to be, that, that repository of folks come to, to, to CH and really understand not only what's happening in CH, not only what's happening in, in, in the city, but kind of get connected to that full gamut of, of partnership and resources, I think is a, a, a really good takeaway as well. Some other big takeaways are.
Before you do that, I'm, I'm trying to punctuate to my colleagues where we're doing the things you're talking about. So all that we're doing and our enhanced effort around communications, the PR firm that we hired, extra work we do in that space, getting out into the community more, being a resource for our grantees, for funds from us and funds from others, the partnership we're doing now with the mayor's office, all of this and the communication around that, we need to do more of it. But that's in the direction of what your recommendations are talking about, correct?
Yeah, that's exactly right. That's exactly right. I think another aspect that's really interesting and really interesting link with what's happening economically and, and the office space, especially downtown and retail is the art, you know, and this is before pandemic, this is during pandemic, this is now, people need space. It's incredibly expensive, it's incredibly difficult to come by. But we're at this interesting precipice of, there's more and more retail ground floor commercial vacancy. We're, we're huge challenges in, in the office sector of, of vacancy. Folks are looking to activate spaces, both from a vibrancy pedestrian level, folks are looking to find any kind of revenues they can for, for commercial products that, that are hurting. Is there a way to kind of merge or marry those two aspects? And then how can we use, everybody talks about pop-ups and it's such a great idea theoretically and abstractly. It's really hard to implement in a way that actually works and, and makes sense. But I think that more than ever before, the conditions may continue to allow that. There'll still need to be subsidy, there's still a lot of challenges. But I think that's a really interesting way for, for the city at large and for CH to play and partner. That again, if we can find some systems that, that work, and, and again, not to say that nothing's happening there either. There's some really interesting things happening, but I think there's strong opportunity in, in the upcoming few years as well to help provide spaces for folks, especially the smaller organizations that, that didn't have the same access before.
So beyond our facilities and building grants, we already do, there's an initiative underway. And Hector and Gretchen and others are leading that effort to find artists' work and living space. And can we be more helpful in taking abandoned spaces in the city or underutilized spaces in the city and turn that over so that artists have both living and working space that I think addresses the niche you're talking about here?
Yeah. And I would say the other, and I'm kind of like bucketing kind of a main recommendations. And, and so those are, those are at the end of, of the report for, for folks. And I think the other element that I just haven't touched on that I see in front of me is, I think CH does a, a very good job at addressing geographic diversity, program diversity, and size diversity in terms of budget size. We did find that the smaller organizations, especially those less than 100,000, so we're talking like independent artists, you know, you just don't have the capacity or resources on house to even have the time to apply to grants, to figure out the landscape, to do some of those kind of upfront costs that even like smaller mid-sized organizations have. And, you know, is, is there a way, there's, there's pretty good consistency in terms of access and, and applications of, of organizations that we found higher than that? And again, that's, that's a small figure, but that's a majority of, 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 of artists too. So how, you know, how can we continue to advocate in particular for those just either starting out or for independent artists? Because there's some interesting, you know, some different barriers and, and challenges for those folks.
Good, thank you. So as I said, there's a lot of work that we still need to do. The good news is we're certainly in the direction of the things you're talking about and doing some things in that space already. I know our time is short, but others on the call may have questions. And I'm, I'm challenged with the screen and seeing, so you may just have a speak up. But if, does anyone have a question or comment?
Reggie, it's Maggie. I just had a quick question, just on the, John, on the methodology, just you hit, mentioned it at the outset. Can you just, is this, you said it was focus groups, how many were there? Was there a survey instrument as well? Is it both qualitative and quantitative? And I'd love to know the sample, the sample size.
Yeah, yeah. So and, and actually, Patrick, we could probably put down the presentation. I just have my, hey, yeah, great, great question. So it was definitely qualitative and, and quantitative. Our sample size was 398 surveys, which is, is fantastic. I was, I was extremely pleased about that. That is, as, as data folks like ourselves, that is a dream, because then you have enough sample size of the smaller subsectors that you're looking to splice things by. So that was, that was fantastic. We use, and I even oversimplified the, the level and the amount of economic secondary data that we used as we business analyst, community analyst, all sorts of resources with Implan and, and CH. So lots of great hard data as, as well. But then the focus groups was, was, was key and always is, you know, to get, and, and what was great is we first issued the survey. So then we could kind of find the findings. And then the focus groups were really kind of forensic. It was like, okay, why this? What, explain this? And, you know, kind of getting at that, like narrative side of the equation is interesting to see, you know, some of the things that were similar, some of the things that were different. You know, the humanities has, has bounced back in, in a different way than, than the visual and performing arts. So it's just some interesting, but there's a whole lot of very universal and consistent elements as well. But so the, the focus groups, there were six different focus groups and it was for each of those industry subtitles that, that we talked about.
Good, yeah. I mean, the one thing that stuck out to, to me was the 89%. And I'm just curious about that because in various geographies within the city and demographic groups, I would find that number to be, I, I could, I might challenge that number as a mean, because there is more acute need in certain parts of the city than others. So I'd hate to have our audience here be left with an average. Yeah.
Well, so I think that's a great, so also, and if we forget what the, the stat was, something like two-thirds of businesses, of arts organizations said that they have not fully recovered. So there's, again, there's that quantitative versus qualitative element. And I would say that there is like, there is no one right way to cut the apple. There's no one data point that explains things. So for example, when we talk the 89%, that's, has your revenue adjusted for inflation returned to pre-pandemic levels? That, that, that's what we're talking about there. We all know that's not, that's not, it's important in many ways. That's not the full story. Costs have increased, especially labor, labor challenges. There, there's so many other parts of the equation that we need to, you know, put all those different data elements all together and then understand what's the big picture of it. And so I think it's important to know that the actual revenue loss straight out of the gates was massive, that 26%. And it felt like more for folks and, and folks that didn't. And again, there's, there's so many folks that went out of business, there's so many folks that are hurt in, in, in many different ways. So the fact that we're still at 89% when the economy is in many ways booming, when there's a lot of different fields that are, are, are experiencing more revenue than, than ever before. And, and we're, you know, the arts and culture is still really lagged behind in picking up. That's really important. And again, that's with a giant surge in, in contributed income levels as well. So if that were to decline, or the folks that don't have the same access to that. So, yeah, so I think that's, that's a really great point, but I want to caution, I think that's a really important figure, but it's one of many important figures.
Other questions, comments?
Yes.
I had just a quick question.
Yeah, so do I.
Go ahead, Hector.
Yeah, my, my question basically is of the six focus groups that you had, how would you determine or what was the determination of the contributing members of those focus groups? And what sectors of the community came in? Or, you know, could you explain that? Or is that explained in the report? Because, you know, we got a copy of it, but unfortunately.
Yeah, I'm not sure how to.
Be able to read or, or digest it.
It's a great, that's a great question. And so that's why we retained Lord Cultural Resources. They had done some prior work and prior engagement work with, with CH. They work all the time, not only, you know, as, as their name suggests, this is kind of what their core specialty is. They have a strong emphasis on DEI and making sure to reach all types of, of voices, especially within arts and culture communities. So they, they developed a methodology and used their existing resources and network. And, and then also worked with CH to make sure that we're receiving perspectives that, that are representing different types of folks. But in broad strokes, it was really about speaking to enough folks within the community of who are we missing? What balances this out? And then casting, casting a, a wide net. But at the same time, a focus group starts to get less and less impactful when, when you have more than eight or nine folks as well. So, so it was really a challenge of how do you have that really small group discussion? So you can really get into things and people can talk. So it's, it's always that, that balance. But, but yeah, but I, I thought that, I was pleased at how it turned out.
Yeah, but how explicit were you in terms of getting these particular individuals that were, you know, the smaller groups and the focus groups? Simply because, you know, what communities were represented? You know, Spanish-speaking, the, 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 the other individuals that were in the community, people members from Ward Eight, Ward Seven, those individuals that perhaps, you know, are not always included because, you know, have been historically neglected from these conversations or to find out their particulars. And some else that you said that triggered some thought process is the idea that, you know, arts have got to be paid. You know, the idea of bringing people back into the theater. But, you know, it's interesting, being officially a South Bronx kid, I never had money to pay for arts.
Yeah.
A city like the Lincoln Center, it had, I had to be exposed to it first. Actually educate myself, go to college and then be able to afford it. So it's a string of things to do. So when you say something like learning how to pay for something, well, you can't pay for something if you don't have the economic resources to do.
Oh, yeah.
Action into the arts. So that to me is a very key factor in this whole study, which by the way, sounds great. And I think it's a good talking point for when we go out into the community and express our progress. But at the same time, I just don't want it to be gloss over certain communities that may not be, have been included. And I'm not saying they were, I'm just saying, I hate to be intentional in saying that these were purposely or intentionally included.
Well, I, I.
I think what you're hearing is that we have a keen diversity and equity lens on everything that we do. I think we need to understand what the study said, what it did, and then we can know how we can move from there. The study is done, so we can't redo it. But we want to understand what's there so that if there are all those nuances, we want to make sure we're careful about. And we can speak to those nuances, because in our world, it is almost all about the nuances. And so that's why we're sensitive to that.
Yeah.
Can I just ask a quick question before, because mine is real simple. I probably just didn't hear it when you were saying it in the beginning. First of all, thank you for this. I can't wait to really look, I've only had a chance to just kind of scan it quickly. So I'm looking forward to looking at it more carefully. My question is, Lord, that was the company that did the strategic plan for DCAH? And I'm wondering, like, who funded the study and who, what was the impetus for creating this study?
Who are you asking that to?
I'm asking that to John. So is Laura the same, that's the same group that did the strategic plan for us for CH?
Yes.
And also who funded the study and what was the impetus for it being done?
Oh, and CH funded the, the study. And I, you, and CH can speak to that, I think, better than, than I can of.
So this was an extension of the, this was part of the strategic plan?
No, no, it's, it's entirely separate study. We actually, we, we work a lot with, with Laura. The fact that they, we, we really respect their, their outreach and, and their knowledge of, of arts and culture and that they'd been working on one of the most recent plans for CH is, is why we asked them to, to sub-contract under, under us in response to this. And we put, you know, in our, you know, is, is a public RFP process reviewed by the city.
We paid, we paid for it.
Correct.
Okay.
My understanding.
So Natalie, my understanding is Laura did a broader strategic plan for it, but this is in particular looking at the impact of COVID-19.
Got it, got it. Thank you.
It's planned in that way.
Yeah, thank you for the work, John, and I'm really looking forward to reading it.
Yeah, thanks.
Other questions, comments? Well, as others have said, we thank you so much for the work. It's, it's good for us to dig into this area because it is important. It's good for us to understand what the report was looking at and if there are nuances for us to develop those. But I was just delighted to see that you didn't come up with recommendations that were orthogonal to the things we're already doing, that we're in the direction and, but we need to do more. I think that's the message, that we're doing good stuff, we need to do more of it though.
Right.
So thank you. We thank you very much.
Hey, thank you all.
Thank you. Before we go to the next topic, I want to just recognize the two of our commissioners who were not here when we did the roll call are here. Stacy Lee Banks is here and Kimberly Minkity is here as well, so, so welcome. Now we're going to go into the public comments. Now we're going to go into the public comments. We have several speakers and I'm going to be that obnoxious timekeeper that keeps them to three minutes, three minutes for your comments. And then I may ask you to conclude your comments. The first organization is the Fifty-One Steps to Freedom. The agenda says that Mr. Bernie Dimshack is going to speak. But I think this, I think Kujenga Jackson is going to actually speak. Is that correct, Mr. Dimshack? Yes.
It's correct.
Mr. Jackson, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. I just want to thank you all for reaching out and making sure that you have the correct pronunciation of my name. My name has been mispronounced my entire life. And so the fact that you took the extra effort to make sure that it could be said correctly, I appreciate that. My name is Kujenga Jackson and I'm here with our lead historian, Dr. Bernard Dimchuk. And we are here to seek your partnership and support for an extraordinary landmark initiative that's going to highlight our great city's art and history. It's going to help fuel some economic recovery by shining a light on the district's unique role in a compelling story of our shared struggle for freedom. Well, as we all know, our, our, our path towards freedom and equality is never a straight line. It's more like a meandering river. In American history, each major episode against oppression was and is a step towards freedom and equality. Fifty-One Steps is going to be telling uplifting stories, celebrating triumph over terror, victory over victimization from the lens of an Afrocentric lens. They also tell stories of women, Native Americans, Asians, Hispanics, all religions and genders, and those with disabilities, all groups who have fought and won their freedom. If you've ever been to Boston, you've probably seen a red line that traverses through the city. That's the Freedom Trail. Well, the Fifty-One Steps is that and is far more. This is the first trail of its kind to connect Anacostia and Georgetown and back again. It combines history, storytelling, digital and traditional art, music and cutting-edge technology. Fifty-One Steps is going to create an engaging, positive, immersive experience that will capture the individual culture of each of the neighborhoods that are on this trail. We're going to inspire, educate and tell the stories of hidden figures and places that most people don't know. You're going to hear and you're going to see and experience over two hundred stories of the past and of today. Like, did you know that Howard University was founded by a white man? And did you know that Georgetown University's co-founder was born into slavery? Or did you know that the Howard Theater was the only integrated theater in the U S? We have the ability to use technology, art and music to make learning our history engaging, fun, familiar and accessible to everyone right from the palm of their hand. We have the opportunity to engage people for good and to create some positive discomfort in ways that have never been before possible. I want you just to imagine a historical figure like Frederick Douglass being, being animated via A R and then courageously walking down the stairs of his home in Anacostia with his white wife, talking about freedom for one leads to freedom for all. I want you to imagine animated murals from local artists that come to life and, and move through you. And you could paint murals like Black Lives Matter on any street, not using yellow paint, but A R, making you part of the movement. I want you to imagine that you're playing tennis with the Williams sisters against the Peters sisters, who were the first black tennis champions. I want you to imagine being able to sign your name with the Emancipation Proclamation outside the African-American Civil War Memorial. Fifty-One Steps is going to do this and so much more. So how is it going to impact D C? The past three years, as we've already heard, have been tough for everybody, especially our youth. And now more than ever, we need community. Recognition of D C's roots will boost morale.
I'm being that obnoxious, I'm being that obnoxious timekeeper. So I need you to conclude if you could, please.
Yes, absolutely. So in conclusion, Fifty-One Steps is going to bring us beyond the National Mall and it's going to drive foot traffic to less traveled neighborhoods. And just like the Boston Trail that generates over one billion dollars in annual revenue, we are striving to drive much-needed tourism revenue, but more importantly, hope back to our cities. And I'll conclude, conclude with this quote from Ms. Rosa Parks. She lived in D C for nearly a decade and she said this, she said, "The way to economic independence is to get an education and to keep on educating." This trail is going to incorporate and connect stories from all eight wards of our city. And it's going to allow us to employ hundreds of D C artists, historians, storytellers, performers, musicians and educators and support staff so that history and art and storytelling can come together to boldly inspire, unify and build national pride as we embrace diversity. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And I know that you've already started some conversations in our grants area to understand how you can engage in the grants process with us. So, so thank you. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Reggie, I have a quick question for, for your guest. I'm just wondering, can you tell me what kind of platform are you using in order to, 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 uh, to produce your program?
Okay. Yeah. So, so for generating the A R content, we use Unreal and Unity Engine. And so this will actually be web-based. And so they'll have something that's on the web using Web X R. There'll be something that's on cellular phones. And so the accessibility, it'll be accessible by all with the technology that we're using.
Great. And then do you have the ability to use things like, for example, things for people with disabilities, hearing disabilities?
Absolut- absolutely, absolutely. Using this technology, yes, we, we have several things that will be built into the trail that, that will address, again, the, the accessibility question, making sure that from, from whether hearing impaired or, or non-seeing, whatever, for, for anybody with disabilities, we'll have, we have feature sets for those on, in different platform styles, whether it's web or whether it's mobile.
Well, it sounds really exciting. It sounds like a great project.
Great. Thank you. Thank you again. Gideon Forman is our next speaker.
Well, hello. I hope all of you are having a great start to your new year and had a wonderful weekend. My name is Gideon Forman. I am better known as G L Jaguar. I'm the founder of Sister Polygon Records and before the pandemic, I used to make a living playing guitar with my former band, Priest. I am a lifelong D C native and I love being a Washingtonian. I have represented our city not only nationally, but internationally, playing music and representing arts in D C here and abroad. Now that we are slowly sliding out of the pandemic, it's still going on extensively, but the whole arts and creative fields has completely changed. And I'm struggling to figure out how to continue to make a living as a artist. I am a two-time recipient of the COVID Relief Grant from D C Arts and Humanities, which has been incredibly helpful to my creative process and to continue to be an artist living in the District of Columbia. Most recently, I used the, the funding from the arts grant to self-release the newest record from my new band, Ecstatic International, which I am the bandleader. Two very good reviews. So I very much thank you, D C Arts and Humanities, for making these kind of grants available to artists living in the city. It's been able to help fund rehearsal space, which is a very scarce commodity in the city. And also with the new economic reality and challenges, it's also been able to keep me afloat. Again, native Washingtonian, and I would continue to love to live here and, you know, be an artist. I would love to volunteer my services to D C Arts and Humanities to further tackle this question of our new modern reality for the arts. So I'll yield my time. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. And we accept all volunteers to help us. So, so thank you, Vindan, for that. Thank you. Our next speaker, Dr. Gerard Janko, the American Eurasia Center. Dr. Janko?
I don't see him, Reggie.
Okay. We'll continue. Perhaps if he comes on, I'll try again. Mary Brown, Life Pieces to Masterpieces Inc.
Hi. Good afternoon. Good evening, everyone. Mary Brown, Life Pieces to Masterpieces. Really, I'm here today to express profound gratitude to the D C Commission on Arts and Humanities. It's been over nearly twenty-four years that we've received support here in Ward Seven, where successfully we have been using art as a cornerstone to everything we do to develop character, unlock potential and provide support to our boys and young men, black boys and young men in Ward Seven and Eight to transform their lives and communities. When we started back in nineteen ninety-six, it was in nineteen ninety-nine, we received our first grant. We might have, we definitely had under a hundred thousand dollar budget. Today, we're at one point nine million and rising. We have strong partnerships. Our outcomes are stellar. We'll share more in a, in a formal report. But it's when, you know, D C Commission had the bags. I mean, I know now everyone's talking about diversity, equity, inclusion, and the list goes on. Years ago, D C Commission understood the language of life pieces. When we said that we were changing how black boys and young men see themselves, ages three to twenty-five, three to adulthood, changing how the world sees our black boys and young men. And our beautiful boys and young men are changing the world's understanding of shared humanity. We weren't using all the acronyms back then. I guess, you know, you know, it has its place, but here we are. And I'm so grateful for, to every member of D C Commission. I'm so grateful to you, Brother David, Brother Khalid, and yes, Brother Reggie, when I heard you were coming on board, I was doing a happy dance. I said, oh, we gonna do this now. So it didn't surprise me when John was giving the report. I, I could just see you going, check, 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 and then just kind of dropping the mic. So I thank you for being connected to community. I thank you for D C Commission having the chutzpah to invest in a struggling organization back twenty-seven years ago. And now we have partnerships. We are very thrilled to be a, 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 a member of the Steering Committee for D C Arts Education Alliance. We're an anchor partner in the building of the Arts Institute for Creative Advancement so that we can get some young people that, that, you know, that you don't normally see working in theater, technology, working to fill those positions John was talking about earlier. And furthermore, we have a bright future. We are now working to expand the number of our boys and young men served to over, to two hundred in the next five years. And yes, thanks to Art Space Immersion, Art Space D C Immersion and some other funders lined up, we are aggressively seeking a permanent home, a building here in Ward Seven, where we were founded, to house the future of Life Pieces to Masterpieces. So we just wanted to tell this commission, thank you for those of the new commissioners that weren't around twenty-four years ago. Here we are, right on the fourth floor of Drew Elementary School and working very hard to secure a permanent home over the next five years. We're profoundly grateful and will continue to shine. We have been celebrated internationally through the International Visitors Leadership Program, through the State Department, the twenty-twenty-two Diplomatic Citizens Award. And this week, Elder Bill, who's been with us almost fifteen years, is winning a national award from the Mentoring Summit for the Lifetime Achievement Award. And the awards can go on and on, but so much love to D C Commission. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. We, we love a happy grantee partner. So, so thank you. Thank you for the kind word.
Take care.
And, and let me, let me not, not recognize the grant team that really makes all this happen. So some of our staff worked very, very hard to have grantees say the things you said. So, so thank you and thank you to them.
It's working.
Reggie, just a quick question from Ms. Brown.
Yes.
Uh, hello, Ms. Brown, Maggie Fitzpatrick. Are you all part of the Art Institute for Creative Advancement, the job training program?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to confirm that. Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll move on to our next speaker, Janu Deppney Shaw.
Yes, hello. I'm Janu Deppney Shaw with Seal of Fontis. And I want to thank you, say thank you to the D C Commission on Arts and the Humanities for this opportunity to speak. I would also like to thank Patrick Realisa, who in his role with the commission, attended my book signing on How the Tin Man Found His Brain, One Attorney's Path for Perceptual Development, and invited me to make a comment. That event was very generously hosted by the Arts Club of Washington, of which I'm a member. My work of recent has been as an author, decision strategist and innovator, as well as a federal practice attorney under the Washington D C jurisdiction. This has included a combined experience of over twenty-five years in management, organization and law. But my background also includes many years devoted to theater and dance performance in New York City. And I am speaking with the basis of this combined experience and involvement on the importance of innovative decision-making and the critical role of art and diversity. Art is often viewed as a more optional consideration in a society or culture, perhaps even a mere entertainment. And diversity is at times viewed as a concept of including varied elements, often polarized or perhaps scattered or obscure, in an effort to achieve a form of balance or enhancement. However, within the meaning of both art and diversity, as sought and fostered through this commission, both are nothing less than critical in a community. Art fosters, assists and supports the development of perceptual awareness. It enhances and enriches our subjective reality, which in turn informs, along with rational consideration, our decision-making. When further extrapolated, subjective reality can influence our deeper insights and even our outward policymaking. This policymaking has the opportunity to innovatively affect law and community at large. The inclusivity of diversity in form of art, culture, ethnicity and race has the power to open that aperture of subjective reality, to expand awareness and understanding, and ultimately perhaps even to heal the world. My personal goal in speaking is to applaud the efforts, encourage the momentum of support and innovative resources in funding, as well as to underscore the vital role of provision for arts and diversity, which in some ways are intersecting, if not entirely synonymous terms. There's no time here in this forum to truly unpack the thinking and concepts proposed, but I thank you again for the opportunity to bring them forward.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I was good to hear. Did Dr. Janko arrive yet?
No, I don't see him, Reggie.
Okay. Well, let me thank Mr. Jackson, Mr. Dimshack, who was there in spirit, Mr. Forman, Ms. Brown, Ms. Deppney Shaw. Thank you so much for being a part of our meeting today and helping us understand both what we're doing and perhaps how we may do better. So thank you. We'll now go to the interim executive director report. David?
Thanks, Reggie. I always feel that what has gone before is a hard act to follow. It's really exciting to, to hear such great work that is going on in the community and, and in our community as well. So, thank you. My name is David Markey. I am the interim executive director. I am a middle-aged white man with short gray hair, short beard, and I'm wearing a navy blue checkered shirt. Happy New Year to everyone. I'm going to start off just with a fiscal year update. We continue to move grant paperwork through the system. I want to echo Reggie's thanks to the folks in the grants, public art and finance teams for their various parts, the parts they play in this process. And Brian will provide more details in his report, but we've established purchase orders for approximately fifty percent of our close to nine hundred grantees. And we are behind where we were this time last year for a couple of reasons. One of those reasons is due to some ongoing challenges in creating vendor accounts for new grantees. We've mentioned before that there's a new system. I do not want to lay everything at the feet of that new system. I fully understand that our colleagues across agencies are working hard to move things forward. And we're partnering with them on, on that process. Unfortunately, until those vendors are set up in the system, we cannot move their grant paperwork to purchase orders. But we have been messaging out to grantees and will continue to be proactive and responsive in our communications. And I'll ask commissioners or anyone who's listening in, if you do have questions from the community or you are a, a grantee, to please reach out to us and we will try to give you as accurate an update on where your paperwork is as possible. So thank you for your continued patience. There are three current grant opportunities at the moment. The last time we met in December, we had just closed or were closing our facilities and buildings relief grant. This is the third year of this program. And as we heard from John, there's still. And as we heard from John, there's still tremendous need in the community for this basic support, non-programmatic support. We had a hundred and thirty applicants all told, slightly higher number than the FY twenty-two cycler last year. And we have approximately one point four million dollars in funds to disperse for the program. We hope to complete vetting later in the month and then to push award notifications out in early to mid-February, which will be two months ahead of where we were last year. So hopefully that'll give, give folks more time to use the money and us more time to, to process paperwork and get payments out the door. A second grant program that is currently sort of in some form of process is the Color the Carb Safety Program. Again, the third year of this program, paneled in December, just before the last meeting. There were a total of sixteen applications, or sixteen artists who were a part of that. And I'm, I will say no more than that because I know the Public Art Committee and Lauren and Deirdre are going to share more information about that. And then the third, the third program, which is hot off the press, as it were, is the launch of the FY twenty-four cycle of general operating support. That opened earlier this afternoon and it will be open through February twenty-first. This is a program where organizations are participants from year to year, and so the number increases every year. I saw some stats in John's report. We have a hundred and fifty-nine grantees this year and expect that number to grow in excess of a hundred and eighty for the coming year. Terrell and the team have been very intentional about reaching out to folks who have not participated in that program in the past, who are eligible to, to do so this year. And they put together a really robust set of workshop offerings for existing grantees to the program and also folks who are new to the program, so that they're getting as much assistance as possible. Something that we've added this year are two workshops called IDEA, or Idea by Design, by a really wonderful consultant we've been working with for a while, Dr. Dorel Cooper. And really, the goal of offering those workshops to these, to applicants, to GOS in particular, is to really help those organizations build out their understanding of the concepts within IDEA and then to move them to, to action. So we'll probably at the next meeting or in February, we'll be able to tell you where we are with GOS applications. Some programming updates, very quickly. I mentioned the last meeting, the Business of the Arts series of workshops and moderated panels is being put together. Camille Ashford and Melvin Witten are coordinating that series. We're going to launch it a little bit later this year. It's going to run from April through June or July. And, and a part of the reason for that is that we want to have the entire set of offerings together so that we can engage in a really comprehensive marketing plan for, for the season. Words on Fire, which is our poetry out loud festival, plus the, the component that was added last year, which is a spoken word piece, will take place in the middle of March. We were originally going with another space, but last week I had a really great conversation with our colleagues at the University of the District of Columbia. And we're hoping that we can work in their performing arts space this year. And there's also some potential for some other partnership opportunities for both us and community members. So that I'll share at a later date. Another exciting program that is just being realized is a grantee application assistance program. This was one of the forty-four recommendations that came out of the task force, was how do we help folks who do not know who we are and what we have to offer? And how do we onboard them to CAH's grant and programming opportunities? And so, again, Camille and Melvin are working with Grants of Public Art staff members to identify current grantees who would be great ambassadors, as it were, and to go out into the community. Again, mainly communities of folks that we, that may not know us and we don't know them. But to help give them, to introduce them, as I said, to the, the breadth of what it is we have to offer and then to help, help them understand our applications and the grants portal in particular. And we're hoping to launch that next month and we'll, and that will be a great lead up to the, the launch of our project-based grants and our fellowship grant in early May. I mentioned before that the Grants of Public Art team are very reflective practitioners. You know, grant making is an iterative process and we try to be responsive to what we hear in the community and from the community. So Ron's concern about the evolution of East of the River to the East Arts Program was, was heard. And, you know, we do not want to exclude anyone. And so we'll do our best to come up with a plan to make sure that Fort Tupon Ice Arena is part of the mix next year. The, one of the big pieces that the Grants Department is working on at the moment is looking at the Fellowship Program. The program that we like to call General Operating Support for Individual Artists to help them stay, live, and work in the city, as it were. This, our commitment to this program has grown tremendously in recent years. I would say in the last three years, we've almost doubled our commitments for FY twenty-three. The current year, we committed three point two million dollars in funding to individual artists through this program. As we see needs, a change in the community, we want to make sure that the grant program itself evolves to match that need. And so we're about to do a deep dive with the community. And that will include some surveys in early to mid-February. Later in February, we're looking at putting some town halls and focus groups and our focus groups in place. And then we'll circle back to the Grants Committee and the Commissioners in March with our findings. Push, sort of start to socialize what changes we're anticipating out to the community in April so that we're ready for that early May launch of an evolution of the Fellowship Program. Beyond grant making, a couple of items to note. I mentioned last month that we were getting ready to push a brand-new monthly newsletter out the door. And that was done, kudos to our colleague JR. And so the goal is really, you know, again, speaking to what John mentioned, it's to help us better tell our story and the breadth of what it is we're doing. It's to help share about the folks who are behind that programming and also an opportunity to share resources to help sustain our community, not only through funds, but through, through other ways of supporting them. JR has also been working with engaging marketing and communications departments across the city. I know he's been very busy having meetings, again, to better understand their needs and how we can better connect with them and, and support with them. And then finally, in my report, it's organizational culture and staffing updates. Our HR specialist Denise Jackson and I are planning next steps for staff engagement following the organizational development sessions in December with consultant Shereen Williams. Denise is also working with the Wellness Committee to create a slate of opportunities for agency staff. And then last, but definitely not least, we have a new member to the team. He is a, a new Grants Department, Grants Management Specialist in the Grants Department, Terrence Brown Jr., who joins us from Tennessee. And that is it.
Welcome, Terrence.
Good.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments to David from his report? It's good. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
So we have, we have two committee reports. We'll start with finance, Kimber. And Brian, of course.
Hey, everyone. I'm just gonna give a quick update. You guys know it. Commissioners, you all have your finance update from our Rita Head in the packet. And so I just want to flag overall, like, two main things. One is, you know, that we've got up to twenty-two percent of our budget that we have available to spend. And we're at the eighteen percent mark. So I think we're an opportunity for us to make sure that we're getting as many of our grant dollars out to our community. And so we are at eighty-two percent, right? We've got it right there on the screen. So eighty-two percent total percentage of our overall budget, right, of that overall forty-five million that are allocated out to grants. And Brian's gonna give us an update. You heard it a little bit in the Director's Report around just where we are, like, how we actually are moving those dollars through. If you look at the total budget, right, fifty-eight percent, which is right around where we are, if we think about March thirtieth being kind of the halfway point of the year, about fifty-eight percent of the budget left, either from expense or to be allocated out as we go forward. So Brian, you wanna give us an update? I think just sort of maybe double-click on what we heard earlier around where we are and the process. I think everybody knows the urgency to get the dollars out for the grants that have already been awarded. So I'll turn it over to Brian.
Evening all. My name is Brian Yende. I am the Resource Allocation Officer. I'm Afro-Latino male, and I'm coming to you this evening in a brown and white checkered shirt. Thank you, Kimber. That was an excellent update. I just wanted to give everyone an update on where we stood with our portfolio as it pertains to getting grants out the door, as well as, most importantly, how we're getting payments out the door. So before I go there, are there any questions regarding the budget balance?
I saw a note from, I saw a note from Cora. I don't know if that was the previous presentation or now, but Cora, you had a question?
Yeah, I did. And I didn't get in too late because I had another call that overlapped. So I apologize to everyone and wish everybody a Happy New Year. And so I don't know if these reports have all come in. Did they have a report from Public Art?
No, not yet. That's after finance.
Is it coming up?
Yes, right after this, after finances, Public Art.
Okay, I'll wait.
Great. So any other questions to, to Brian at this point? Otherwise, Brian, you can proceed.
Okay. Thank you, Reggie. Patrick, if you can go to document number two, please. Okay. So ladies and gentlemen, this is a document, an analysis that I briefly put together because, because I know what Reggie would ask. So the first column of the document is the total number authorized in the September meeting, which was eight hundred and ninety-two grants. The tot, the second column represents the total number of purchase orders that are established. Now, in order to incent invoicing, you would have to have a purchase order. The third column is the requisitions. Requisitions are the documents that we put in that go through the approval flow that ultimately become purchase orders. So if you combine the two columns together, that represents five hundred and nineteen of the eight hundred and ninety-two authorized grants. And from a percentage standpoint, that's fifty-eight percent of the grants that have been authorized. If I'm listening, if I'm hearing Reggie in my head, which I often do, Reggie would ask, where we, where are we at this point? Or where were we at this point of the year last year? And I would say we are slightly behind it, simply because of the obstacle with the budget. There was funding that was appropriated in the general operating support cohort that should not have been there. They're still in the process of reallocating the funding, but we have made an arrangement with the OCOFO to move forward and press on with establishing the purchase orders as we need to get dollars out the door.
So Brian, let, let me stop you for a minute. I, I have these conversations with you a lot. So the acronyms of OCO and what a purchase order is versus a requisition, I get it. I need for you to try to explain in layman's language to both our colleagues and others who may be listening that are mostly interested in where are we in getting money into the hands of the grantees?
Yes, sir.
So you can just recount those percentages and that stuff and say, give us a sense of where we practically are getting the money out.
Okay. Yes, sir. So to date, we have a hundred and ninety-seven payments that have gone out the door. That represents twenty-two percent of the total amount that would have been authorized on purchase orders. We also have an additional hundred and one vouchers that are in the system right now. And what happens is, once the vouchers are approved by the CFO's office, then payments are also sent out the door. So to answer your question, in terms of the payments, we're looking at, like I said, twenty-two percent has already been sent out and probably close to another eighteen to nineteen percent will be out the door within the next twenty days. I can tell you that as soon as the purchase orders are generated, we send a report to the Grants Management Team and they contact the grantees immediately with instructions on how to invoice us. So as they go, we go.
Okay.
Did I answer your question?
Yes, yes. And I mean, I knew the answer already, but I'm hoping that it made sense to others.
So I, I want to say, I, I like this chart because I don't think we've seen anything like this. So if Reggie's in your head and pushing you along, he's like, keep him in there. Because, yeah, that's what I want to know, is who's getting their money and where are they in the stages? The question I have is, when we're all, these, these are, these are all grants that were voted on and approved in October? Like, what's the timetable for these grants?
So traditionally, the, the September meeting, the September Commission meeting, the entire portfolio is set before the Commission for your approval of the various different art programs. There are a couple that are one-offs that happen throughout the year, like in October, November. For example, the facilities and buildings, traditional grants, that's generally like around October or so. But by and large, most of the programs were voted on in September. What would normally happen, Natalie, is the, we would send out the grant agreements. The agreements would be sent back, signed, and then executed by David. Then this process begins. We were behind this year as a result of a snafu with the budget. And so that's why we're, where we are right now. What I do want to point out-
What is a snafu? What does that mean? What's snafu with the budget?
So when we had, when we converted to our new system, we did, we formulated the budget using the old attributes. Then they developed a crosswalk. So I'm not sure exactly what happened, how the budget was loaded, but twenty-seven percent, I mean, excuse me, seventy-something percent was allocated to GOS cohort in error. Should have only been fifty-four percent.
Okay. So it was some sort of technical glitch, then, sounds like?
Yes.
Okay.
It was a technical glitch in the office of the CFO. And I'm not trying to point fingers, but just to be clear, that was not an issue at the age. It was the office of the CFO.
Good. Okay. And then as far as, you know, and again, I think we're getting to what we want to know, which is how people can get their money. What is the thing, where is the point on this chart where it gets hung up? And, and what can we do about that? Where are these things hung up? And what is the main, is it, you're saying, is it waiting for people to submit their stuff? What is, what is the holdup?
Okay. So the initial holdup was when the funding was in the wrong, in the wrong buckets. So we had to get the authorization to go ahead and appropriate or, I mean, or obligate the funding, even though it was in the wrong bucket. They'll have to fix it on the backend. But initially, that took us a couple of months to get that authorization. So at this point-
So let me, let me, let me try to put it in, you know, Texas language, because we're very simple-minded in Texas. Because the money was put in the wrong bucket by the office of the CFO, we couldn't pull that money out of that bucket to give out. So instead, we moved money around. We had to get authorization. We moved money around, and at the end of the day, things would be put back in place. But in the meantime, we had to move money into categories from which we could pay people. But that took a while for us to do. Did I say that right, Brian?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
One of the other things I just-
I'm sorry, I'll just add that, you know, we have these calls every other Wednesday with David and Jeff and others. And so there are three or four things that we're doing to address the issue that is here. And this may answer your question now. One is, we're making sure that when we can re-categorize, move money around in a way to get money out and then fix it on the backend, we're doing that. So we're brute-forcing a way through so that we can get people their money sooner rather than later. Number two, we're trying to communicate actively and aggressively with our grantees so that at least they understand where we are in the process. Some things we can't fix at this point, but we can at least be communicative with them about where they are in the process and see how it's gonna be helpful. The third thing is, we are thinking through, how do we get more money out going forward? And can we use some of the brute-forths we did this, this year? And can we use some of the brute force we did this year on an ongoing basis? So that we can get money out there. So we're trying to see what we can do here. If I'm remembering correctly, Brian, normally at this point in the year, of the total amount of money that's been authorized to be sent out, about seventy, seventy-five percent of that money would be out in this timeframe. We're now at the forty-five to fifty percent. So we are behind from where we are normally. But it's not as though normally all of it would be out now anyway. So the grantees have some expectation of the time it takes to get this money out and would not have necessarily the expectation, all the money would be out at this point, but more money would normally have been out at this point. So Brian, correct me if I say anything wrong.
No, sir. You said that dead on, spot on. The only thing that I just want, the last thing I wanted to point out in this as well is, first, I want to say thank you to all of the grantees who have endured this delay. We are working feverishly to get the purchase orders established, get payments out the door. One of the challenges that we did have was initially, because the funding was all put lumped into the GOS cohort, there was a delay in terms of which programs were going to be obligated first. So if you notice here, it is a healthy mixture. As we deliberately look to try to address every program so that we don't just have one program that has all of their grantees funded while the others are not. Again, I thank everyone for their patience. We are cognizant of the project-based programs as well and are trying to push them out. And lastly, I will say thank you so much to Ms. Kia King for the diligence in putting well over four hundred grants into the system in less than a month. And that is not a small task, especially with some of the issues that we have been encountering. So thank you again. I look forward to have an even better report next month.
So any other questions? I hope that, though this is not a great situation, people at least understand where we are and why we're there. Because I get grantees walking up to you in the street all the time, and I at least feel more prepared to explain where we are. But any questions or comments or clarifications that Brian and Kimber could give? Did we say it right, David?
Sorry, Reggie. Terrell is in my office. He was distracting me. Would you mind repeating that? Sorry.
Kind of what I said, did we say it right?
Yeah, yeah. There's, I always think of it like a hurdle race. There are always these hurdles that grantees have to get over. And Natalie, to your point, oftentimes grant managers are waiting for complete paperwork. You know, oftentimes folks are struggling with securing clean hands, insured, updated insurance documents, that type of thing. So so there are multiple ways or places where folks can get tripped up. And I've started conversations with folks from other agencies to say, is there anything we can do for you? So you guys have a better understanding of our community and our needs so that they can best support us. And likewise, is there anything that we can do at the agency, you know, as grant managers are the first line of defense, as it were, to help people better understand processes with our sister agencies?
Other questions, comments? Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Kimber. Thank you, David. Public Arts, Maggie?
Yes, Chairman Danley, we have one grant program that we're going to vote on this evening. It's the FY23 Color the Curve School Safety Program. You all recall, the Color the Curve Program is a collaboration that we have with the District Department of Transportation. And the person who's managed this program for us is Grant Manager Deirdre Darden. And if Deirdre's with us, I'd like for her to present the grant proposal.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So I'm Deirdre Darden, Public Art Coordinator and Grant Manager for Color the Curve School Safety Project. And presenting to you today for funding recommendation is FY23 cycle. So as Maggie mentioned, this is a collaborative design and place-making project between CAHD and DCPS. And our aim is to increase pedestrian safety with these murals that go in curb extensions and intersections that are around schools in DC. And we started off with four schools and intersections that were identified in wards one, four, seven, and eight. So today, we're requesting a total of two hundred and ten thousand for up to seven artists if the additional sites become available. We had a very close scoring with a very competitive, this is a very competitive grant. And so we had some very close scoring, and there was a request to maybe include more schools. And we heard back from DDOT and DCPS earlier today that we will be able to add three more schools. So it's up to seven artists, seven schools at two hundred and ten thousand dollars. Yes, very exciting. So during the review process, we went through all sixteen eligible applications. Panelists scored, using our online review panel from one to ten. And applications were presented, ranking highest to lowest. And so because of our, as I mentioned, having some very close tied scores, there was a request to incorporate those finalists and to find additional schools for them, which we were able to do. So our final funding recommendation is for seven artists at thirty thousand dollars each. That would be the grant amount for a total of two hundred and ten thousand dollars.
And because this is on such a small screen for me, you may have shown it, but what's the geographic of the award? Distribution of these, of the presence of the artists in various awards?
So the artists reflect similar awards of the schools, one, four, seven, and eight. And the awards of the schools will be one, four, seven, and eight.
Good. Questions, comments? Well, I'm sorry, is that, I guess I have to take the, Maggie, you have to move if we approve, then I can-
Yes, I have to. Yeah, I'm just going to read the language, Reggie, as our process resolved that the commission adopts the funding recommendation for the FY2023 Color the Curve School Safety Program. The grant is presented for a total funding amount of up to two hundred and ten thousand. So we need to take the vote for approval.
So any questions or comments, discussion? If not, I will do the roll call. If you're in favor, aye. If you oppose, no, or you choose not to vote. Stacy? Stacy? Cora?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Juanita? I think she had to leave. Natalie?
Yes.
Kimber?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Carla?
Yes.
Hector?
Yes.
Gretchen?
Yes.
And did Stacy come back, Stacy? It passed her. Thank you. Thank you.
Chairman Danley, I think Chairman Barry would also like, I'm sorry, Chairman. Commissioner Barry would also like to discuss the Barry project, if they understand it.
Okay.
I don't know if this, I'm asking questions. I've noticed the emails line. I have a question. When can the group of people get in, the artists get in the space? What is the holdup? I've seen several iterations of the discussion of when it's going to get done. This has been going on over a year. And it's an agreement that needs to be finalized so people can get their work done. I've seen two emails, maybe three, from the artists saying, we need to get in the space that we found for them. And so what is the holdup? So they can go full blast? They don't have to work at waiting and having to go through a lot of hoops? What does it take to complete that MOU and let the people do their work? They have deadlines.
Who can answer that question?
This is David. I'm happy to try and answer the question. We understand that the artists want to move forward, and so we have a meeting on the calendar tomorrow. Our goal is to lock the agreement with DGS into place and circle back to the artists before the end of the day. That is our goal.
Then I have another question. Why did it take so long?
So it is a legal document. It's come to us from DGS, and it's a standard lease. And because we're a sister agency, there are pieces in it that are not relevant to us. So we just, we need to make sure that the lease reflects the need. So there's it's not questioned down the road. So we do appreciate your patience. We appreciate the patience of the artists. And as I said, we'll, our goal is to nail it into place by close of business tomorrow and to reach out to the artists.
Thank you for that answer. My issue is not patience. My issue is about process, and everything you just said is true. All of those things come with evaluating a document. I do it on the regular. My question is, why did it take so long? Those same things were true up nine months ago, a year ago. Why does an artist have to write three emails to get something done? Taking the initiative, bringing that MOU to a conclusion, and let's move on without other people pushing? That MOU sat, and nobody did anything for a very long time. I'm very aware of it because I was talking to the people who were communicating with me at DGS, and then they would say, it's done. And I said, okay, great. And then I looked up, and it wasn't done. And then I look up, and I see the artist saying, you know, what can we do? So I hear what you're saying, David, and I don't disagree that those are important things, but they were the same things that were available or that were issued this time last year. The process is what's bothering me, moving things along so people don't feel like they're not being heard or that they have to wait. And so I'm like concerned, and it really isn't so much about the project itself, this particular project, but the process where people have to push instead of looking and being surprised at the aggressiveness and the responsiveness and the proactivity of the commission. That's my issue. And if you say it's all going to get done tomorrow, then today I will take you at your word. But on Thursday, I want to make sure that it's done.
I hear you, Cora. I really do. And I will do my best to move along tomorrow with my colleagues. And I agree with you that we should be proactive and not reactive. So, and, you know, we will make sure to do a better job of that in communicating where we are in the process, you know, to grantees moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Anything else on Public Art? Maggie?
Nothing, Chairman Danley. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. So we have two other, two point one other pieces of business. And just briefly, so that we don't lose track of where we're against some of our big aspirations. I've put it on every agenda, is where we are. So why don't we start with Jeff talking about an update on creating the foundation?
Sure. I'm Jeffrey Scott, Chief of Staff. I'm a white male wearing glasses and a black polo shirt. So just a few updates on the progress of the idea of a commission foundation and the work that's gone into that. We've met with the Executive Director of the DC Public Library Foundation, and we have an upcoming scheduled meeting with the DC Public Education Fund. These conversations are to help further refine what the role of a commission foundation could be and what its relationship to the government especially would be like. We're looking to schedule a meeting with Chairman Mendelson in advance of the agency's February twenty-seventh performance oversight hearing. And this would be a topic likely for that meeting as well as possibly a topic for the oversight hearing. Previously, we noted that there are several other state arts agencies that have foundations as well. One of those was the Virginia Commission on the Arts and the Virginia Arts Foundation. However, last year in 2022, the Virginia State Legislature repealed the legislation establishing that foundation. So we're going to be reaching out to the National Assembly of State Arts Agencies to try and get some additional broad scope information on state arts agency foundations, the ones that have had them, how well they functioned, and what possible challenges that they've encountered so that we can sort of plan for any of those things ourselves.
So again, what, from a timeline standpoint, from most aggressive to least aggressive, where do you think we are as far as moving to actually have the foundation in place?
You know, a lot of it depends on how Chairman Mendelson takes it. Because, you know, any legislation that we propose that we would need to authorize a partnership with a foundation would go through, you know, would go through him, would go through the committee in the whole. And so I think, you know, gauging on how the meeting goes with him in the next couple of weeks in February is what would really be able to tell us where we stand with, you know, the timeline. If he's amenable to it and seems positive with it, then I think, you know, we can still aim to get it done, you know, as quickly as things can move through the process. If not, then that changes the game a little bit.
And just to share with my colleagues, I have now met with almost half of the council members and intend to try to get to the other half before we have this meeting. And so far, everyone has been in favor of and supportive of it. So I'm hoping that we will have full support from those council members and therefore full support from Chairman Mendelson. We will see. Questions, comments on this, anyone? Yes, we'll keep pushing forward. The other thing is this notion of bringing something that feels like art Basel to DC. And Carla's been taking the lead on that around these sort of special events developments. Carla, update?
Thank you, Reggie. So right now, we are in the process of, we're still in the planning period. In March, between March and April, we're looking to have a tastemaker event more toward the end of April. And so, Terrell, I know I need to get with you to work through some of that. We also had talked about a feasibility study, and I'm not sure if we have budgeted money for that yet, but that would be the next step to get the feasibility study underway.
And I'll just add one update on this. As I've walked around the city, either people have approached me or in the course of a conversation, the notion of this event has come up. And for the most part, overwhelmingly, people are very supportive of it. There are those, I've discovered. And in most cases, the larger organizations will concern that by us trying to drive towards this art Basel thing, money that would have gone to those organizations would go to this effort. And therefore, they feel it's not necessarily a win for them. So I want to make sure that as we sort through this effort, that we are clear about the impact it will have on all organizations. And hopefully, it won't injure any organization or cause us to be unable to give money to any organization, but rather allow us to fund as we can this work. But the intention is for this to be attached to the foundation that can fundraise on its own, and therefore, this would not be a burden on the commission. But this is a concern out there. So Carla, let's make sure in our preparing and thinking through it that we are safeguarding any undue money going from this commission to that relative to money going to organizations and artists. Any other comments on questions on where we are with this? We'll keep pushing it.
Just as a question, this is Hector. We have Art All Night, and obviously, we have given the prerequisite amount of dollars towards that. But would an art Basel be self-funding to an extent that ticket sales for participation plus also exhibition space also for sale? So there is a revenue component to it for self-funding. So that needs to be part of the component as to why people should allay some of their concerns for having an art Basel type of work. And in licensing for art Basel, would that cost us enough money to make it prohibitive? That we cannot license, you know, for example, Art All Night, instead call it Art All Week or something, using our own already successful program? Instead, call it Art All Week or something, using our own already successful program?
Yes, at this point, that is our intent. I don't think Art Basel is looking to brand our event as Art Basel. They're fine just kind of mentoring us through the process.
Okay.
So.
As a matter of fact, I'm sorry.
No, we want to look at Art All Night for this year and, and slowly integrate a few new ideas into it uh for the fall. And then the next season, we'd be able to roll out um kind of the full program.
Yeah, I was gonna say, when we took the delegation down to Art Basel Miami, we were trying to figure out, how can we have this conversation to tell them we do not want them to brand our event? And the first thing they said was, they do not want to brand another event. We were like, good, this is great. So they're willing to work with us and help us develop it and take all the learnings, good, bad, and indifferent from what they've done and what we would do, but we, this would be a DC branded event. And as Carla said, because we have Art All Night, it may become Art All Week or Art All Weekend or something, but it would be a DC distinct or branded event. And you're right, it is revenue producing, it, it wants to be revenue generating, revenue producing so that it doesn't depend heavily on and perhaps not at all on anyone else, um, certainly this commission.
Mm-hmm, okay, thank you.
Other questions, comments? Thank you, Carla. In our last few minutes, and I'm, I'm sorry, we're running a little bit over. We do have a bit of new business. As it ends up, our regularly scheduled February meeting would be February twenty-seventh. On that same day, we have our performance oversight with DC Council Committee of the Whole. And it's not possible for us to have that meeting, the performance oversight, and have the commission meeting. So we could move the February meeting to the next day, Tuesday, February twenty-eighth. Or, given the way things have happened historically, we could cancel a February meeting and just move everything to March. But that is something that would have to take a vote. Um, and so we can discuss it, but at the end of the day, I want to take a vote on whether one votes for a February twenty-eighth meeting, which is Tuesday, as opposed to Monday, or canceling that and just move into a March meeting. Uh, questions or comments before I take the vote?
Question, Reggie, this is Gretchen.
Yeah.
Um, Terrell, David, do we need any, do we have any upcoming votes for grants?
I was just talking to Terrell about that, sorry.
Hey, sorry. So my computer, um, everyone just sounded like wah, 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 so I had to come over here so I could actually be at a meeting. Um, but no, no votes in what we're doing in February is we're doing the community outreach for AHEM. We may have two grant committee meetings. So uh, we will have our grant committee meeting for February as well as March.
Okay, but no votes coming up?
No vote.
Okay, thank you, Reggie.
Like a good point, uh, public art, any other place where a meeting would be necessary because a vote needs to be taken? Maggie? Or Lauren or?
I'm, no, I'm not.
I think we're good, Reggie, if you wanted to just bounce it to March, isn't that correct, Lauren?
Yes, we'll, we'll have something for March, we'll have something for March, but we don't have anything to vote on in February.
Good, so I now have to take a vote from the commissioners. And so your vote is for February twenty-eighth or uh moving to March? Uh, Stacy?
I'm moved to March.
Cora?
February.
Maggie?
I'm February twenty-eighth.
Juanese is left, I think. Natalie?
I guess March.
Somebody needs to mute, somebody needs to mute their line. March for Natalie, Kimber?
March.
Mariah? Mariah? Carla?
abstain.
Hic, Hector?
Move to March.
Gretchen?
March.
Let me go back, uh, Juanese is not here. Mariah, are you back with us? So I see five votes for March and two votes for February twenty-eighth. So we will move our meeting to March, we'll set a date that makes sense for everybody. I, I think our usual, whatever it is, uh, third Monday of the month? Good. Um, I have to go to my notes, my notes, I.
Reggie? Reggie? I just think i- in, in light of the conversation we had about the delay in the grant um delivery process in, in the absence of a February meeting, because I know this is such a critical priority for all of us, perhaps the team could just issue us an update in February, letting us know the status of those grant deliveries?
Okay, good.
Now, Maggie, also, we're going to be having one, if not two, Grants Committee meetings in February, so we should be able to update from that.
Good. And I received a note that the, the March meeting would be, would be March twentieth. I'm sorry, Brian.
Okay, no, I just wanted to just make sure that you're aware that the budget oversight hearing is in, in March as well, March thirtieth, so.
Yeah, but March twentieth should be fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I checked that, I checked that, good. Um, is there any other new business?
No, I just wanted to um note for the public record that I saw in David Marky's office, he has a piece of art that I have the same one. Is that the sugar, is that Sheldon Scott?
Uh, it is, yeah. Yeah.
That is so funny, there aren't too many of us who have that. Yes. I'm looking, if you could see my computer, I'm looking at my uh sugar.
Funny, yeah, there's, I think there are only ten copies made, so.
Yeah, and so we have two of them. Very good.
My Sheldon Scott is cotton mouth.
Oh, you have cotton mouth, I have cotton mouth too.
I have cotton mouth.
That's funny.
Yeah, so there being no further business. This meeting is adjourned at seven thirty, thank you all for your time. I have my devils to make it official. Thank you, take care, everybody.
Oh, thank you. Bye.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. Thank you.
Bye.